Meeting will come to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor Mangan. Counselor Matuski.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Appolitano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Hey.
Counselor Hannah.
Present.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
Would the audience please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the draw, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You please remain standing for a moment for the incident in Dallas, Texas, please. Clerk, will you read the first item on the agenda?
Item number one, Mr. President, is in order to confirm the appointment of three lateral transfers to the City of Everett Police Department as follows: Tracy Asenoff, Nathaniel Gauvier, and Nuno Alameda.
Fable action on the order.
Motion made in second for fable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please answer the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Appolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Hey.
Counselor Hannah.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, the transfers have been approved. Michael, before you start, anyone wishes to take pictures, please come forward, come inside to take the pictures. Don't forget, last chance to do it, so come on up.
Please raise your right hand. If you'd have to me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Thou art faithfully and impartially.
Thou art faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a police officer for the City of Everett.
As a police officer for the City of Everett.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreed with the rules.
Agreed with the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the City of Everett.
Of the City of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Thou bear true faith and allegiance.
Thou bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Thou will support the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
Thou will support the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Thou bear true faith and allegiance.
Thou bear true faith and allegiance.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And thou support the Constitution of the United States.
And thou support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Do you have to sign here? Let me just find yours and sign away. There's two of them, sign one piece. One for the chief, one for you. Make sure you... He signed mine. He signed mine. Did he? Yeah. That's all right. I'll sign. I'll take your name. Do you want me to just sign? I'll keep them all.
Clerk, will you read the next slide on the agenda?
Item number two is an ordinance requiring the Chief of Police approval for overnight construction work. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Everett as follows: Whereas the need to do overnight construction work can at times be a necessity, and whereas said work is currently prohibited in the City of Everett, and whereas the approval of said work is a question of public safety and convenience, therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Everett as follows, to section 1380-62G14, loud and unnecessary noises, is hereby amended in subsection six by adding in the last sentence after the phrase "7:00 A.M." the following phrase unless first authorized in writing by the Chief of Police, and be it ordered that this ordinance shall take effect upon ordainment and subsequent approval by his honor the mayor.
Fable action on the order.
Motion made.
What?
We need a second. Motion made in second for fable action. Counselor Matuski first.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, after reading this new ordinance, I agree with it 100 percent. Some people start construction projects at 5:30, 6:00 in the morning. It's very inconvenient for the neighborhoods in Everett. But, you know, it's apparent to me that we also have some other noise problems in the city with motorcycles, with the loud muffler in some cars, and of course, the airplane noise. These are all nuisances, and I'd like them to be addressed in the future, and I'm going to work on that with Counselor McKinnon. We have vehicles driving in the city, Mr. President, that are very loud, and they say these mufflers are legal, but when you can hear them two blocks, five blocks away, it's a little ridiculous. And I'd like to, I'm going to talk to the chief regarding this matter, and hopefully we can add to this important ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Expect to see something on the calendar for the next, on the agenda, rather, for the next meeting. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I ask Mr. Gordon from Wynden Resorts to Operry Forest quickly, please?
Motion made, second. Do I ask the gentleman forward? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All moved?
Mr. Gordon, good evening. How are you tonight?
Well, thank you.
Good. Mr. Gordon, can you just quickly explain what the hope is by passing this change to the ordinance? So right now, you guys have permission to only work on the site until 8:00 P.M.?
Well, we have permission to make, what's described in the ordinance is loud construction noise until 8:00 P.M. And our plan is to work three shifts, six days a week. So that's 24 hours a day, six days a week. However, the first shift, which is the traditional shift that a workforce would work, roughly 7:00 to 3:00, would be by far the busiest shift. That's when most of the work would get done. The second shift, however, there would still be activity on the site. That's roughly 3:00 to 11:00. The third shift would not be much activity. It's primarily cleaning, stocking, organizing, that sort of stuff, to get the site ready for the next day. And even on the second shift, a lot of the work would be, you know, slower after 8:00 or 9:00. But there is the potential that second shift could work, you know, full shift. So the intent was, and the hope was, that we could keep that shift working through that second shift.
Roughly, can you tell us how many employees would be working per the 7:00 to 3:00 shift? Because I'm going to ask a follow-up question after that.
Our peak, as you know from the different publications, we expect to peak a little over 2,000 workers at once. There's 4,000 construction jobs, and we only expect about 2,000 of them at any one time. So if you spread it out over three shifts, the main shift would probably have most of them. So let's say it's 1,000, 1,200 people on the main shift. Could be another 5, 6, 700 the second shift, and maybe 100 on the third shift, which again would be primarily organizing and cleaning.
My question to the follow-up on that is, yesterday, actually, Counselor DeFlorio and I were talking about this piece. Is there a way to be able to change the 7:00 to 3:00 shift? Because as all of our colleagues know, 7:00 A.M. at the Rotary right now is a complete nightmare. The traffic trying to get southbound on Route 99 into Boston is almost impossible. And coming home, it has the potential of being the same situation with the tolls being increased on the Tobin Bridge, unfortunately, in the very near future. So is there a way to be able to stagger the 7:00 to 3:00 shift so that these cars are coming in not on peak hours and not going home on peak hours? I know it has a trickle and effect and affects the other two shifts, unfortunately, but is there a way to be able to do this, Chris, in your opinion?
Yes. Here's how. First of all, the afternoon, the breaking of the shift at 3:00 is usually not as big of a problem because 3:00 is earlier than a lot of the, you know, maybe downtown office worker might be getting out of work. So the 3:00 isn't the problem. The problem's in the morning. So in the project labor agreement, we negotiated an agreement with the unions that we can stagger the shifts from roughly 6:00 to 8:00. So some of the shifts, like, some of the trades like to start real early because they can get, start early, get done early, and get home. So we would assume some trades would start early, and then they would be staggered roughly on the half hour. So you'd still have a fair amount starting at 7:00, but you could have them starting at 6:00, 6:15, 6:30, 7:00, 7:30. So yes, the project labor agreement with the trades allows for that.
Could we chop it up even? I'm trying to not add abutment of cars on Route 99 because, as we all know, again, it's a nightmare. So that 11:00 to 7:00 shift, if we even had to change it so that work was being done earlier than the 7:00 A.M., could we change these hours somehow to make this less impactful on the roadway for the residents of Everett?
You mean earlier than 6:00?
Earlier than 6:00, coming in for that shift. And I know it's a complicated scenario.
Yeah, yeah. The only issue is it is part of the labor agreement. Right now, it says they can start as early as 6:00. That doesn't mean they wouldn't want to start earlier than 6:00, but right now, the agreement doesn't have that in it. But I'm happy to go back and revisit that with them and see if any of them want to start earlier.
You know, and again, because I'm sure you know, it's almost impossible to get down there, around the Rotary, and it's starting to back up on Main Street, and it's, you know, it's starting to have backup down there and Broadway the other end.
Yeah, no, I can't commit to it tonight because it would require a modification to the collective bargaining agreement, but we're happy to talk to them. And some of the trades, there's a few that historically have liked starting real early and getting done real early because it gives them the afternoon, the evening free. So we will inquire, and if we can, we'll push as many as early as we can.
And what timeframe are we working on passing this? I know this is sort of a time-sensitive matter because we're hoping that the decision from some of all is run into in the next few days, two weeks, a week, and it will be steamhead from that point forward.
Right.
So this is a time-sensitive matter.
Yeah, we, as you say, that we expect this week to hear about Chapter 91, and we hope it's positive. If it is, we'll be ramping up quickly. There's already a fair amount of people on the site today, but it would ramp up quickly over the next few months.
Okay, so do we have time to get these hours worked? Because it is a concern of mine, as the City Council from the area is a concern on these hours. And we have talked about this, and it's not news to you guys to hear this.
Well, changing the project labor agreement won't happen quickly. I mean, it took us a year and a half to negotiate it, so I can't tell you I can get back to you quickly on that because the trades move pretty methodically. There's usually a lot of, it's not a simple process. So I can talk to them tomorrow morning and sound them out on this, but I'm not sure how long it would take to actually change it because there's 28 unions that have to sign it, and they all have to vote, so it doesn't go, you know, it doesn't happen overnight. But I can certainly get an indication from them as fast as tomorrow and get back to you on that.
But adding 2,000 additional cars is a concern in a public safety manner. And I'm going to yield the floor to my colleagues, and then hopefully I can have an opportunity to go back on this, but I'll yield the floor right now telling my colleagues.
No, and just not to interrupt, we agree. I mean, add the construction workers driving and also the construction trucks deliveries. So we agree that Broadway will be a challenge, and also, it's going to be on a construction at the same time. We're going to rebuild Broadway as well. So we're keenly aware of the traffic issues and certainly want to work closely with the city on that.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually don't have any questions, but I do want this council to understand that this ordinance is not just for Wynden. This ordinance is for everybody, for any construction company or anything in the future. So I just want to make that clear. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Counselor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. My question would be, where are they going to be parking, the ones that are going to be working on-site? Are they going to be parking on-site?
Not many. Most of them, we're in the process of demolishing several buildings, including the retail building out in front of the site, which has quite a bit of capacity. We've also demolished the 3 Charlton Street building, which has a fair amount of capacity next to it for parking. And as you've probably read, we're going to be demolishing a building across the street for parking. So not many of them will park on-site because there's not much room, and it's not that safe. We don't want them walking around on the site. But they'll be, most will be parking nearby, and then we're also strongly encouraging, when we get to a certain tipping point where there's too many there, we're also going to be running shuttle buses from a couple of different T stops. It's, a lot of the folks in the trade don't traditionally take the T, but we're going to try to push them that way and see if we can get as many as we can on the T.
Sure. That'll help if it's any impact on the traffic at all. The other concern that I would have is noise down there from the hours of 11:00 to 7:00 A.M. Who would be impacted down there? And maybe the councilman from the ward could answer that a little bit better, but that would be my question to you right now. Who would be impacted?
Well, we would assume it's residences, and the nearest residences, of course, are going to be back toward the Brickyard and back in that area. And then, as you go up Broadway on the other side of the street, there are still residences along that side of the street. So the normal receptors for that kind of noise would be the residences. We do think the 11:00 to 7:00 shift is going to be real quiet because it's mainly, as I said, stocking and cleaning, but there is a potential, you know, you never know there could be something that happens. And so the concern would be for the apartment building down at Brickyard, and then the apartments, there's housing, some apartments, and some single family across the street.
Sure. So in the event that there was such an issue of noise and they were complaining to us on the council, what could we do to actually?
Well, the first thing we'd want to do is do, we've bought a handheld decibel meter that we can measure at the property line and see if it exceeds the 50 decibels or the 60 or 70, whatever it's going to be. So first we'd want to do is make sure we've got the facts. We've already done background measures. We've gone out there and done, we've measured for a 24-hour period. We've measured the train, the traffic, you know, everything, so we know what the background noise is. And then we compare that, and if we're, if it's still causing complaints, we'd have to modify the work to try to minimize the noise.
All right. And then, I mean, we would obviously complain to our chief because that's where it's going to be going, I believe, now through this ordinance, so the chief would actually be coming to you guys with that. Okay. All right, thank you.
And just as a follow-up, we met with the chief last week on the subject and talked it through, and I think he understands the measuring we'd be doing, and we'd have an open line of communication with him.
Sure. Thank you.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. I just want to be clear to all my colleagues and yourself that this is a general ordinance, echoing the sentiments of my colleague right in front of me, that this is a general ordinance for all construction, that I think it partly is an anticipation of the Wynden construction that's going to go forward. But as the representative of the area where there are the residents living right across the way, who probably would be greatly impacted by this, and the concern for the traffic, which I know you share, I want to say to my colleagues, the way that I would recommend we would be addressing that is that when the chief gives his written authorization, I'm sure that there'll be stipulations and particulars in terms of what you can and cannot do. And what I would request is that we keep, as you have done thus far, keep lines of communication open with the councils from the area, the city council, the neighborhoods, continue to do the neighborhood meetings, and it's a work in progress. And we just continually monitor it to make sure that you're able to do what you need to do, which is in everyone's long-term best interest, but also do it in such a way that it has minimal impact on the community. So I would just impress that upon you, and that's all I'd have to say on it at this point. So thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gordon, we plan on having quite a few police details, you know, on that Broadway, lower Broadway. You probably need them at the Rotary at this point. You anticipating extra police details?
Well, certainly during construction on Broadway, yes, because they're going to be interrupting the construction flow. The other issue is access in and out of the site, and as that gets to a peak, it's in the construction manager's contract that if they need, if they and the police determine they need a police detail, they'll add one.
Okay. And this other, you know, and I have all the, I represented Ward 1 for 30 years, okay? I'm a councilman-at-large now. This is not a district councilman thing. There's five councilmen-at-large. I want to know when a letter's opening over there, okay? Not through email, but through the city council office, if that's possible.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Any communication as far as, are you going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony?
We're debating that, but yes.
Okay. Well, you know, the days of sending an invitation out, the days of sending invitations out and personal phone calls seem to be over, and I'd like to reinstitute it with this project, if that's okay with you. And the other thing is, you know, the bridge at Wellington Station, they're doing that over. Is that kind of, there's extra traffic now that's backing up there?
Yeah. I mean, one of the, I mean, one of the issues that we all will face over the next three years is the traffic because there's construction at the bridge.
Right.
Broadway, Sullivan Square, Wellington, Sweets.
Counselors, please, we're having another meeting.
So there's a number of, there's a number of traffic issues that will have to be dealt with. So yes, we're working with the DOT and with the city. Matter of fact, we have meetings coming up again this week with the staff on some of the traffic management issues because we don't want to say there's not going to be a lot of traffic because when you have 2,000 construction workers, there is. So I think we have to work closely with the city on that and manage it well to get through that construction period.
Mr. Gordon, I have a lot of knowledge regarding you. I'm a union bricklayer, and I've worked on many projects, so I'm aware of the union agreements that you have made, and they're all union contractors, am I correct on that?
Yes.
So they're pretty stand-up people, and they're from Everett. I assume there's a majority of them.
We are recruiting, and by the way, we'd welcome this discussion. We're recruiting union workers to be from Everett on the site, and we have some today, but we'd like to have more and more. So we're trying to get lists from the union of who the Everett workers are. We haven't got them yet. Once we do, we'd love to recruit as many as we can to get on the site.
Okay. I don't want to seem comical. There seems to be some smiles in the back with my comments here. I don't get that, but, so there'll be extra police details on this project, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm very concerned, the Rotary, if there's one accident, we'll say at McDonald's, okay? That Rotary is backed up for an hour. It happened a week ago.
Right.
A week and a half, and the police could not get down there. I think they finally did. I don't know where the accident was, but that Rotary was backed up to Marlin on Main Street. And Councilman McGlaughlin is right. We've got some issues with traffic, as you know, and progress is moving forward, and I'm in favor of this, and I'm in favor of the casino, as you know. But the line of communication, the old-fashioned phone call.
Counselor, way off the subject.
I'm not off the subject, Mr. President. I'm talking about police details. We have the Chief of Police here. I'd like to ask him a few questions, if that's okay. Can we have him come forward, too?
Mr. Chairman, all due respect, we have an ordinance in front of us.
Hold on. Before we do that, I'll accept the motion from the board to have Mr. Taco before us.
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Taco also before us. Any objections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Also, there's a half a motion to have the police chief before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Have the police chief before us. Any objections? I'll have the police chief, please, all in favor. I'll have the police chief also come forward, and I'll give the chair to now Counselor McGlaughlin.
I don't really have any questions for the Chief of Police, and I would like to hold my questions over because I know we can only enroll this tonight and then find a vote on it in two weeks from now at our regular meeting. So I'm going to hold off my questions and do some more research on this before I ask any further questions.
Okay. Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the chief. This is a general ordinance for all construction, not just the Wynden project. So the question I have for you is, under this ordinance, we're giving the authorization to you as Chief of Police to go ahead and authorize any work after the hours that are currently on the ordinance. In a situation like that, I've known you for a lot of years, and I know you have a level head. You're going to take it on a case-by-case basis, address whatever is presented to you. Based on the circumstances, the volume, the size of the task, you'll make whatever suggestions, recommendations, guidelines for the individuals to follow. Is that accurate?
Very accurate.
No, I have no problem. Thank you, chief. I have no other questions.
Counselor Matuski.
Thank you. Chief, we're discussing noise levels, but within that realm, we're talking the construction project. So do you have a plan forward for extra traffic patrolmen for that area?
Well, we've been, obviously, we communicate with the Wynden folks on a pretty regular basis right now, and any issues, we've talked about mitigating traffic in the past. As the project gets moving, yes, I have no concerns that there will be appropriate police personnel deployed. They've talked about it. You know, everyone wants to make things go as smooth as possible. You know, we have to be realistic, though, during rush hour in the morning, there's obviously going to be traffic. There always has been, and there always will be to some degree, but I don't foresee any problems.
Well, you know, there was an accident somewhere down lower Broadway.
Sure.
A week ago. Are you aware of that?
No.
And the traffic was backed up.
That happens quite often, though. I mean, when there's a traffic accident, there's usually backups. I mean, until we can move the vehicle off the road, if it's disabled, or get them exchange papers and move them along.
Well, you may want to consider having a cruiser down there during this whole construction phase so that they don't, the police had a difficult time, it appears to me.
Sure.
And an ambulance, too. I don't know what occurred down there, Mr. President, but no, I'm a reasonable person. The project must go. The project must go forward, and the sooner the better, and three shifts is what it takes. So I'm in favor of that. But you'll do, this is a noise ordinance, and...
Correct, yep.
You know, I did bring up to the president and the members here that we've got some noise issues, but I'll deal with that in the future. But for instance, this ordinance also is going to affect the Market Forge area.
Any project.
Any project.
And as Councilor Capone said, I mean, I ask a lot of questions. We do this now. When projects come up, we ask a lot of questions. We obviously want to make sure progress can go on, but also do it in a way that satisfies, you know, neighbors and make sure that we're not, I guess, causing too much disruption to them. And I think, I think most people accept the resolutions that we come up with.
Well, I'm in favor of the ordinance, but I just wanted to make sure that, I have some understanding that there's going to be quite a few police presence in the whole Lower Broadway area coming in from that bridge. They finally, it took five years to do that bridge, anyway, but that's another, I hope Wellington, the Wellington Bridge is quicker than that. But as long as you understand that we need extra police down there, and, you know, it's my understanding through the agreement that the Wynden people will, are paying the bill for any extra fees involved in the construction.
When we request police details for the project, yes.
Okay.
And as far as the traffic, we couldn't agree with you more. I mean, we're paying for all those people to sit in traffic, so we've got deliveries coming, concrete deliveries, that kind of stuff. You know, it's just, it's our worst enemy to have them sit in traffic, so we're very anxious to work with the city.
Good, well, that's great to hear. Thank you very much.
To the traffic flows.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Councilor McGlaughlin, Delasola.
Evening, chief. I just thought to see, we're talking about, people have complaints, they can call you. Could we set up a separate number that these people can call, instead of calling the station and tying the station up with the phone calls of complaints or issues they have? Could we have our own phone number that...
So there is going to be a number set up. We're working on what that number is.
Okay.
But it's going to be combined and worked through all the details, not just on the construction project at site itself, but other roadway reconstruction efforts that will be underway over the next three years due to mitigation from our project. We're going to have one number with one call center that can manage the calls and make sure they're staffed to the appropriate person, the appropriate company. And of course, you know, this goes for anything. I've told a number of you, you know, if you are getting complaints from any residents in your wards, you certainly, I'm sure, call the chief, but just give me a call. Because we don't, the intention of any ordinance change, we want to work overnight, we want to clean up, we want to get everything ready for the shift, but if there is some unforeseen disruption, let us know, and we'll have to adjust our plans. I mean, that, we intend to be good neighbors, that's, we try to be open and honest about this all along the way. So please, just pick up the phone, let me know.